Going to call this meeting into order at 7:12 PM. I'd like to make a note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Winkle and alternate Commissioner Khan who are absent. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm honored to stand before you as Chairman of this board, and I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to each and every one of you for taking your time to join us tonight. Your presence here is a testament to your commitment to our community, and we greatly appreciate your involvement in the decision-making process. Before we proceed, I would like to kindly request your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and orderly atmosphere throughout this meeting. We understand that passions can run high when discussing matters that impact our community, but it's crucial that we afford every individual the opportunity to be heard and respected. I kindly ask that you refrain from interrupting or shouting over speakers as it hampers the constructive dialogue we aim to foster. To ensure that we can accommodate as many voices as possible tonight, we have established a three-minute time limit for each speaker. This will help us manage the meeting more effectively and allow all residents with concerns or thoughts to express themselves. We truly value your input and want to hear from you, so we encourage you to make the most of your allotted time. Once the public hearing is closed, it will turn to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss and question the petitioners. This is an essential part of our deliberative process as we work towards making informed decisions. In order to ensure a productive exchange, I kindly request that you allow the board to conduct this questioning without interruptions. This will enable us to gain a deeper understanding of the issues at hand and make decisions that best serve our community's needs. Once again, I want to express my gratitude for your presence here tonight. Your engagement and involvement are vital in shaping our future of our community. We appreciate your understanding and cooperation in maintaining a respectful environment during this meeting. By working together, we can foster a spirit of collaboration and make decisions that benefit us all. Thanks. Let's get started. Do we have any visitors' comments that do not concern what is on the agenda for tonight?
No.
No? All right. That would go to the public hearing for tonight. Tonight, we're going to conduct a public hearing to review and consider a request to amend the regulations relating to the development and use of 5.66 plus or minus acres located in the James Edmondson Survey Abstract Number 398 and the James W. Giddens Survey Abstract Number 471, being part of Lot 1, Block A, the shops at Highland Village by changing the zoning regulations from marketplace plan development retail to plan development overlay for multifamily and retail use. Said property being generally located north of FM 407 and west of Village Parkway, which is FM 2499. Autumn.
Chairman, Commissioners, Autumn Ammon, Community Development Coordinator. So you may all have noticed that on the briefing, that was not generated by me this time. It was generated by Abra Nussar with Peloton Land Solutions. So in the last couple of months, you know, we have been reviewing several applications. So with that being said, this item tonight being one of those applications. So in order to keep up with the applications going forward in a timely matter, we had contracted with Peloton to review the application and bring it forward to Planning and Zoning. So with that being said, I will now hand it over to Abra Nussar to proceed with the briefing.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission members, members of the public. Like Autumn said, my name's Abra Nussar with Peloton Land Solutions. I am the Public Planning Practice Lead for our company. So I'm going to walk through very, very briefly just some project basics. I know there's probably going to be some technical questions that come up either from you or from the audience members, so I'll save the majority of what I have to say to answer those questions, but I thought it would be helpful just to kind of run through the basics. So the subject property is located here in the shops at Highland Village. It is being proposed in the existing movie theater parking lot. The shops at Highland Village are generally located at the northwest corner of Justin and Village. So the snuffers would be demolished with this proposal, and the proposed building would go right where the parking lot is for the movie theater. It is proposed to be four stories and 60 feet tall. It would have 280 apartment units with structured parking for a total of 302,000 square feet. The proposed development would result in a substantial increase in property tax revenue compared to the existing parking lot that's there now, and the development would support the fiscal vitality and sustainability of the city and the shops. So right now, as noted in your staff report, and the staff report is available online in the agenda packet if anyone wants to read that riveting content, but the shops has over 20 vacant tenant spaces right now, and I know the applicant might have some of this in their presentation as well. But what we know from a technical standpoint is having multifamily or residential units within close proximity to restaurants and retail helps them thrive. That's just a technical basic of planning and design. So through conversations with the applicant, we did talk through a potential graduated setback, or what we call proximity slope, whereby the building would get taller as it got farther away from the northern property line next to the homes. The applicant did not adjust their design based on that request, so that comment was unresolved. They did provide some sightline exhibits that show various views to and from the structures. The homes on the northern property line are a mixture of one and two stories. Obviously, with a four-story building with apartment units, there will be visibility to and from the units, especially on the upper stories of the structure and from the homes to the structure. These are the elevations. The south one is on the top, the north one is on the bottom. So that northern elevation would be what is facing the homes. You can see on the right side, there's something that looks different than the rest. That's the screening of the proposed parking garage. The parking garage would not be flush with the ground in that area. It would actually start on the second story, so that's why it's overhung like that. These are the east and west elevations. Here's an aerial view of the site in the top left, and what we're just illustrating here is that there is existing landscaping on the site that would be removed. So we've got terminus trees in the parking islands and also the landscaping trees along Village Parkway. The applicant has stated that the trees along the northern property line would not be removed. So that and existing to the existing, I mean, in addition to the existing trail along the northern property line are proposed to remain. So here's a look from Village Parkway looking west towards the subject property. Key topics that we discussed in the staff report and with the applicant, the PD content and structure. So the applicant is proposing what's called a Plan Development District, which is a zoning tool where you can customize your zoning district. They requested a base of retail. Retail does not allow multifamily use, and they're requesting several modifications to the retail district. In your packet, we provided a comparison between the existing shops' plan development district, the R retail district, the MF district, and what they're proposing. So you can kind of have all the apples-to-apples comparisons for your reference. We did recommend that they keep the existing shops' PD and just amend what they were proposing for this project, but instead, the applicant is requesting a new PD with a base of retail with modifications. We did discuss the size and location of the structure. Again, we did talk about that graduated setback and maybe some other alternatives, but there was no adjustment made to the building location, size, or setback. We did discuss also the landscaping buffers and tree preservation, but all the setbacks are noted in your report, and again, there wasn't any change to those. The parking for the subject site is a bit complicated. So the shops are parked as a development overall. So the applicant submitted, you know, all the tenants and their square footages and the parking requirements. The movie theater, the applicant is proposing to have a 30% reduction in required parking with the office uses. That's okay. Movie theaters and offices do not have the same hours, so that's what shared parking is for. With that in account, there's still under by a few hundred spaces for the multifamily and the movie theater. So, you know, even taking the shops as a whole, there's still a net loss in the shops of 314 once the multifamily comes in, and the applicant can provide more clarification on that if you need it. And then the trails, they are proposing to keep both the north-side trail and the east-side trail along Village Parkway. However, there is a small portion of the building proposed very, very close to or on top of the trail on Village Parkway, so we just noted that in your staff report that it appears to be disrupted in that location. Your PD approval criteria tonight is the following. In general, I did want to talk about number three, the public facilities. The applicant did submit a traffic impact analysis and drainage plans. Both were reviewed by Peloton Land, our city engineer that we have on staff, and both were found to be substantially compliant. So in terms of traffic impacts, you know, it's technically compliant regarding the requirements that we would look for in a TIA and the capacities associated with that and the improvements. Same thing with drainage. The applicant's proposing enough drainage facilities in the right way to accommodate all the drainage requirements. We did receive public hearing feedback. I might let Autumn speak to the exact numbers of emails, letters, phone calls. It's my understanding that there were multiple phone calls requesting information about what was going on, and then there were at least 20 emails in opposition, and there was a letter in favor. I'm not sure if there's more than that that's been received since my knowledge, but Autumn can clarify that, or you probably have copies of all that information. Action by P&amp;Z this evening, hold a public hearing, and then you would make a recommendation for approval, approval with conditions, or for denial to City Council. If you do vote to deny this evening, then it would stop at P&amp;Z tonight unless or until the applicant appealed within a certain window to go to City Council. Also, we received questions about the 20% protest provision. If it does proceed to City Council, a supermajority vote would be required at City Council since that 20% has been met. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, now or later.
Go ahead, Brian. I'll let you be first.
I was going to say later.
Just quickly, when you mentioned a traffic impact study, can you go into that a little bit more about how you found it to be compliant?
Sure.
And more in terms of, okay, if we add X amount of apartments, it'll add X amount of cars at X amount of time?
Yep, and I'm not an engineer. I can play one on TV, but I bet the applicant has one over here that can answer some technical questions. From our understanding, you know, each use generates a certain number of trips. Those trips are going to necessitate certain improvements. So with the capacity that exists now and in the future with Village Parkway and Justin Road, it is enough and more to accommodate the proposed trips. So that's kind of the nature of the summary.
Whoa, whoa, please.
But I'm sure Kim Lee Horn did the traffic impact analysis, and I think they're over there.
And it does take into consideration future, the future growth of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I will mention too, you inspired one more thing. We did check with the school district about proposed capacity of the school district to accommodate any additional students, and they did not have any negative comments, and they were fine with the request.
What do you mean, "fine with the request"?
They didn't have any negative comments. They said the schools had enough capacity to serve the proposed project.
And what was the proposed new enrollment?
So, you know, there's no exact number to that. On our side, from the planning side, what we look at is called PPH, which is Persons Per Household. Each housing type is going to generate a certain Persons Per Household, which can govern anything from school capacity to parking requirements. The applicant has stated that this proposed product would not have a ton of kids. From our standpoint on the planning side, we can't say that with certainty.
So when you approached the district with 280 units, what was the number you gave them?
That's the exact number that we gave them, is the applicant's proposal. The school district has a consultant on staff that does their demographic. They're called Zonda. It used to be called Templeton Demographics. So they actually had their consultant review their request in terms of what Zonda would anticipate the PPH being.
So I don't know what Zonda is, but again...
It's the school's demographic consultant.
So 280 units going into the schools, how many kids is that?
Yeah, I don't have the number that Zonda used, but typically, in a city around Highland Village's type, we would look at about three persons per household on average, and so, you know, that can deviate up and down, obviously, as an average, but I'm not sure what exact number that Zonda uses because theirs is much more refined to the actual district, but I would anticipate it being around three, and then not all of those would be kids.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else?
Someone can speak to the traffic?
Happy to come back if you think of any more questions.
Thank you.
No problem.
All righty. The applicant. I think you've got a presentation for us.
So thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Josh Pogue. I'm with Pogue Shopping Centers, and we were hired about three and a half years ago to be the manager and do the management and leasing for the shops at Highland Village. So just a little bit of background, my company has been around, and actually before me, for 35 years, and we focus on lifestyle centers across the country. We've developed more lifestyle centers than any other company in the country, and that's our primary focus. So this asset, the shops at Highland Village, was something that was on my radar screen long before we participated and got involved in it, but we started talking to AEW, the owners of the shops, in the fall of 2019. And you think about that, that was before COVID, but even then, we said, okay, there are things that need to happen with the shops to evolve the shops, and that's our job is to come in, to help them with the evolution, to help improve the shops. And the two things that we really came up with were placemaking and densifying. And so from the get-go, even before COVID, we started looking at the site, and we started saying, okay, how do we densify the site? Even then, like, office is not a very hot asset type. Now with COVID and the work-from-home, office is being decimated around the country. And so we looked at multifamily, because multifamily has been extremely hot. I mean, Dallas and the greater Dallas area and Highland Village have been growing rapidly over the last, I mean, 10 to 15 years. So, well, long before that, but just the growth over the last 10 years has been unbelievable and exceptional. So we started looking at where on-site would be the right place to try to densify. And so, I mean, we've looked at Chin Chapel, and that's something that we've been asked about a lot, and to be honest, that side is too thin. We've looked at some layouts, but frankly, would have taken all the parking on that side of the shopping center, and would have created an inefficient, awkward shape for the multifamily itself. But even more importantly, it would have taken the parking away from the retailers on that side of the center, and that's what we heard loud and clear from the retailers, was that they need that parking. The parking in the interior is used up very rapidly, and so it's the parking on the outside. The overflow parking is where they just wanted to make sure that we didn't disrupt that parking. So then when we started looking, we said, okay, let's go to the northern side of the development to densify. And that worked from like just a placemaking standpoint, because the residential would book in the end of the shops at Highland Village and create like an end cap for people that are coming through the center. Initially, we said, look, AMC is doing okay here. They're not doing badly, but they're just not doing great. And with where the movie theater industry was, we knew that that needed to have a reinvestment from AMC. And at the time, AMC wasn't interested in making that investment. So even before COVID, we said, okay, we don't think AMC is going to be here for the long term. COVID hits, and as everybody knows, the movie theaters shut down for a year and have been decimated, and even today, they're still struggling to come back. The volumes for 2022 were about 30% lower than they were in 2019 across the movie theater industry in America. So AMC has taken its hit, and now they're trying to grow back out of that, and so more recently, they've expressed interest in staying, which is something that we did not believe would happen a couple of years ago. But regardless of AMC, we started meeting a couple of years ago, as you all know, with members of this body, with members of the City Council, with the HOA, with the neighbors, to just lay out kind of what we were thinking. And as you can remember, the first time we unveiled this to the neighbors, we had 600 apartments, and it was not well-received. So we went back to the drawing board, because there were two, there were many points, but on the development side, one, it was too many apartments, and we heard that loud and clear, and then two, was that people were really prideful of AMC, of the movie theater, and wanting to have a movie theater in their neighborhood and their community. So that's where we focused on, okay, shrinking the number of apartments down from 600 to 280. And we started working with AMC, we started working with backups, and so we made sure that whether it was AMC decided to stay, or we came in with another alternative to AMC, we would have a movie theater there on-site. So that's how we came up with the site plan where we are today. So the point of what we're trying to do here is to focus on the shopping center, because the shops are successful. We have been in charge of the, or not in charge, we've been, had a great run as the best shopping center in Denton County nine times in a row. We have sales at the shopping center of over $100 million, but as any shopping center or mall, as you know, in this greater trade area, you need to keep evolving and improving in order to stay relevant in these times. So that's where we wanted to push AEW and the community to try to continue to evolve. Some of this evolution was, you think about like back in 2007, was that the iPhone was just being released in 2007 when the shops first opened. I mean, think about that. There was no online shopping on your phone. E-commerce was 3.4% of total retail sales. Now it's north of, or it's approaching 15%, and it's going to exceed 15% this year. So the evolution of shopping has changed dramatically where, I mean, some of the retailers that were here before, Justice, Coldwater Creek, York &amp; Company, Delia's, some of those don't even exist anymore. And there was a heavy focus on fashion, where fashion is not thriving right now because it's easy to buy online. So we've evolved, and this has been our job on the leasing side, was to start pushing for new retailers, and that's where we got the restaurants, the Sip 'n Savor, Brass Tap, Lambos, et cetera. We brought in Kendra Scott, I mean, which is a fashion retailer, but it's a more modern fashion with jewelry. We brought in Tangier and Spa, I mean, just different lifestyle-type tenants. So that's where we wanted to modernize the tenancy. But last but not least is, we believe that building in a lifestyle center, you need to create energy and vitality. Energy begets energy. Like, the more energy you bring into a center, the more you will become a central part of that community, the more you will become a natural part of the traffic patterns of the individuals. And so that's where we focus on the residential, because we have a lot of like good momentum on the tenants, and we're continuing to get new tenants. I mean, some get leaked before we're ready to announce them, but we have new tenants that are coming to the property, so the momentum is good. But where the residential comes in is it adds its vitality to the center, where you have the residential tenants or residents that are walking on the property at 6:00 AM to go get a cup of coffee, or to walk their dog, or to go to the path. They're there in the afternoon after work to go get a cocktail. They're there to work out, and the fitness tenants, they're there to get their nails done and go to the salon. It's a constant traffic of tenants or residents to bolster the energy of the center. So that's what we're really trying to do here, is to energize the residents of, or the energy for the whole center by adding the multifamily. So this is a way for the shops as a whole to continue to improve, to continue and evolve, and to take the next step in its life. So that being said, I kind of jumped in before even introducing my partners over here. So, sorry, guys. So first of all, have Sean Chatlos, who's with AEW, the owner. We have Matt Tracy, who is a senior portfolio manager with AEW, and then Josh Ames with Presidium, the housing developer that AEW has hired to work with us on this project. So, sorry for jumping the gun, but Matt, hand the floor over to you.
Great, thank you, everybody. Good evening. So my name's Matt Tracy. I work for AEW Capital Management out of Boston. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. There we go. There we go. Okay, sorry. So I work for AEW Capital Management out of Boston, and my colleagues Sean and Merritt here are joining me today. And I think just, I have about 26 years' experience in the real estate field in various capacities of real estate investment management, and I act as a senior portfolio manager and oversee this asset with Sean and Merritt, and I have the real direct contact with the client, so I'm really kind of the direct line with the equity source here. But the three points, I want to get across three points today, this evening, for you. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I'm going to let Sean and Josh take most of the airtime here today, but I thought it was important that, you know, for a lot of people in this room, you may not know who AEW is and who the equity is behind this, so that's number one. And why is this, number two is, why is this project so important to AEW? And lastly, you know, how are we going to execute on this? And I think I want to just touch on a couple of those. So AEW, for those of you who don't know us, we're one of the largest global institutional investment managers in the world. We have 40-plus years of experience, and we have about $41 billion under assets under management, as you can see on the slide. We have about 300 employees. Our headquarters are in Boston. We have a satellite office in LA, and we have a to-be-determined office that's going to be set up in Denver. So we cover the whole U.S. We invest in all different product types. We invest in, you know, all the major product types, office, industrial, retail, senior housing, and we invest across all risk spectrums of real estate, so we invest in the core value-add and opportunistic. But over half, as you can see, probably over half of our investments are core real estate, which is really what shops at Highland Village is for us. It's a core real estate, and it's a long-term hold for us, and it's a, you know, a long-term view that we have since we owned it in 2014. So in terms of the clients we represent, we have, we represent over 800 clients worldwide, but in this case, this investment is owned by a pension fund. So it's a state pension fund, and AEW acts as a fiduciary for that pension fund. So pension funds generally invest about 10% of their pension fund in real estate, and so we oversee that pension fund's real estate assets, and shops at Highland Village happens to be one of those assets. And the beneficiaries of those, of the pension fund are the pensioners, which are the state employees, the teachers, the policemen, and the firemen. So they're the ones benefiting from the returns on these assets, especially this one. So they get the distributions, and then there's a, you know, distributions and dividends for the pensioners who retire. So that's the beneficiaries on the owners, and I deal directly with the real estate board within the pension fund that deals with the pensioners. So that gives you a little bit of a background. So we're not just a, the point I'm making there is that we're just not an owner trying to make a dollar here. This is a long-term investment, and it's for a pension fund, and it's for, you know, the pensioners of the pension fund. So why... So why, why shops at Highland Village? Why is it important to AEW? Well, in the development, AEW invests in this, you know, success of properties and its surrounding communities. And it's really important to us to not only, you know, invest in capital in our properties that we, we own, but also the communities around it. And I think that AEW is, you know, this, this shop at Highland Village is extremely important to AEW, as evidenced by the support here from my colleagues. And as I mentioned before, Shops at Highland Village for us is a long-term hold. And it's, we've demonstrated that, we've, we've invested a significant amount of capital in, in, in this project over the years since 2014. And our, you know, our investment here is, is not going to end here. I think the, the proposal for the multifamily investment that, that we're proposing for the development of the multifamily is going to further enhance the property here. And I think that it will, you know, help the image of the community and, and as a top destination of, of the city of Highland Village. So I, and again, I think the multifamily not only will, will, will be a destination point by, by adding the multifamily, but also it will give a, a real boost to the retailers, as Josh mentioned, in terms of how, you know, they go about their business and, and in terms of the sales of the center. And lastly, you know, how are we going to execute? I think you're going to hear, you know, two words here today, experience and quality. And I think that's what we have to really, you know, focus on here because I think this is going to be a very high-quality project and done by experienced groups here with AEW, Presidium and, and asset managers for the AEW. And so, you know, POG Development, Presidium and AEW will also be involved in this. And they're best-in-class operators, we've done business before. And, you know, the project will be overseen by AEW through, through Boston, but also the boots on the ground will be Presidium and POG. In closing, I just wanted to say that the Shops at Highland Village will be, you know, the highest quality with strong demographics from our proposed renters and developed, developed by experienced professionals from all groups that you see here. So with that, I'll hand it over to Sean Chatlos, who's our asset manager at AEW.
Good evening, Commissioner and Committee. Again, the focus here is to talk about Shops at Highland and really our plan that we're putting in front of you today and why we believe this is going to help secure our future of tomorrow. I personally have been involved in this asset for about eight years. This asset for me is like raising a child. I think everyone can relate to that experience. Since Matt bought this asset on behalf of the pension in 2014, I've been working very actively with him as well as working with POG. In terms of sending this property out for success, that meant, you know, when I first started, you know, Luke's locker was vacating. There's sort of a churn of, of tenants with national bankruptcies. It's not been easy to run retail in this, in this environment, we'll talk about that later on. But when we were focused on strategy, which again was pre-COVID, you were kind of came down to what Shops at Highland does best and what we think the future of shops is for, for the community. We kept going back to the fact that this, this is a really successful shopping center. Like congratulations, everyone here for making it so successful. A hundred million dollars is not anything to balk at. That is a significant amount of generated dollars. Those dollars help generate sales tax revenues. Those dollars help prop up the property values, not of the community, but also of the shopping center. That has institutional-grade quality and people recognize that across the nation. That is a huge accomplishment and certainly Denton County recognizes that as well, that Josh had mentioned. What we really see here though is, you know, a vacant parking lot in the foot of our entrance. And I totally understand the community concerns about traffic. I totally, totally get that. Even since I started on this asset eight years ago, the amount of traffic, the amount of things that popped up, 2499, 407, happening in Flower Mount, happening to the west, you're kind of in the nexus of all this stuff. Things are happening in Frisco are, you know, making people find Highland Village a desirable place to live, to grow, to live in the community, participate in the community. We think that's a benefit to the shops and we're seeing that, we're seeing that in store volumes of the shops. We are not seeing that in the store traffic of the stop, of the shops. We're actually seeing store traffic decline. And that's been on a trend since 2021, two years since COVID. At a clip around five to 10% a year. So sales are up, traffic's down, roads are busy, they're not coming in the store. We've had a lot of engagement with the community. Community for us means your stakeholders, but as well as our tenants. And again, our tenants are your local businesses. And when, when they essentially have options on the table to say, look, I could lease space in the Waters Creeks, the Legacy Place, Village of the Parkway, these other lifestyle centers that have multifamily, have the density, have, have the vibrancy we were talking about, it's a really tough sell. We are seeing even drops locally in the past two years, what's happening in Flower Mount, the Riverwalks, the Lakesides. Those are appealing to a customer base that we think we should be participating in. Highland Village should be participating in that. Our plan, again, is out of the normal, I totally get that. But you have a 400,000 square foot shopping center that has been there for 15 years and needs a shot in the arm to make sure the future success is what I think we all want it to be, which is the gem and jewel of, of the community. We are backed by pension funds that is well-capitalized and willing to make this investment. We already have talked with our client about this and, and they're eager to move forward. But we do think it's important for this reinvestment to cement the future. And, and I do think it's important to stress that local businesses, local businesses are looking at this as validation that this is a retail community, that, you know, you're going to be able to attract businesses of the future. And to Josh's point, I think we, we see we're on that, that inflection point to really make this special. So I think with that, I will turn to Josh to talk a little bit more about. I can, I can cover it. Okay. So as Josh has mentioned, you know, we really do feel like retail is under pressure today. There's trends that are happening, we're witnessing that, you know, with POG as a, a national presence, us and JLL as, as a, you know, good national perspectives. And it's, it seems sort of basic, but you know, taste, taste change, you know? It's a constant battle to be relevant and that's always the top of mind for consumers. What's really changed in the past 15 years that Josh was mentioning, you know, the amount of options and convenience, it's really been an uphill challenge for retail. I know maybe things, you feel differently that maybe this should not be a shopping center if you were going to do this all over again today. But you guys have a shopping center, it's a successful one and it's a national draw for the, the tenants. This is on the map for tenants. And it is a regional draw for, you know, five, 10-mile rings, people come here. But that means for us though, is that we as owners, and we have been active in doing this, is trying to encourage that investment from those tenants. A lot of the apparel soft categories are still kind of slowly coming back into these shopping centers. But we, we do think there's an opportunity to re-merchandise. We do think they're looking for something different. They're, they're looking for the tenant that is shopping, cross-shopping in proximity and sort of capturing the essence of the shopping center, which we think, if you're living in a shopping center, you're probably going to the restaurants, inviting your friends, you know, shopping for new clothes, you know, having a coffee or cocktail. We want to encourage trading car traffic to foot traffic. I understand 400 units, there are 280 units, sounds like a lot. We manage 25,000 units across the US. We'll talk about with Purdyum, who manages several thousand as a local developer in DFW. We know how to operate these. And to Matt's point about quality, that's the intent of, of this. So with that, I think we'll talk about the retail concepts we've added. So back to this slide, these are the concepts that we've had to endure collectively. But we do feel like we're at a, that inflection point. We do feel like we're seeing that momentum. And I would encourage you all, if you have not already, to participate in shop at these local businesses. I would encourage you all to support, thinking about this shopping center and extensions of that as ways to support your local economies. There's incredible, as Aubrey said, there's incredible benefit, not just with the sales tax. A hundred million dollars will only, we think, grow as these concepts refresh, rejuvenate. You have more customers on the doorsteps of these businesses. That will support property taxes of the shops. And we think as an incremental add to the city is, it's really a benefit. Transitioning ourselves from shops to the matter at hand, which is our application for multifamily. I just want to talk a little bit more about Presidium and our, our process to bring them onboard to this project. We went through a very competitive process to evaluate not just site locations like Josh was mentioning, but also partners. And being a, a retail center first with an option to build a multifamily, this is like bleeding edge, but we're starting to see it. These are national trends that POG understands, Presidium understands. We're seeing it in our own malls, shopping centers. It is a unique opportunity and something that everyone has a very high bar to even bring it up to this point. We do not make those investment decisions lightly. It speaks to the condition of the shops and I think how viable we think this, this works. Again, that's based on experience and working this asset, seeing it transition over time. Specifically to Presidium though. Sorry. So we brought in Presidium to consult on this development. But we also have a full list of consultants we brought on board as well. Jackson Walker, O'Brien Architects, Kim Lee Horn. These are really the experts and engineers. We, we know the real estate, we know how to run these centers, we brought in experts and they are open and present here for additional questions if there are from, from the committee here. But with that, I think from some of the technicals, it'd be best to hear from our development partner, Josh Ames himself.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you to the city and the Planning and Zoning Commission for having us here today. We very much appreciate your time and giving us a platform to present. I'm Josh Ames, the Vice President of Development for Presidium. I'm based here in North Texas, I live here in North Texas and I oversee all of our multifamily development projects in North Texas. Presidium started 20 years ago and has been doing ground-up Class A multifamily development since 2017. Since the doors opened on our first new delivery in 2019, we've developed over 3,200 units across the country, 1,200 of which have been here in North Texas. We currently have 2,500 units under construction and another 6,000 in our pipeline. We pride ourselves in developing and constructing best-in-class multifamily. We carefully study our competitors, we go visit them, we see what they do well and we do it better. That's our process, it's simple and it works. We aim to be the best property in every sub-market we are in and provide unparalleled amenities and top-of-the-market finishes in our units. I don't know if anyone's been in a recent multifamily project that's delivered, but the amenities are getting a little out of hand. It's becoming somewhat of an arms race and our projects are no different. We provide club rooms, game rooms, resort-style pools with infinity edges, 2,000-plus square foot fitness centers with the best equipment, yoga rooms, spin rooms with fitness-on-demand classes, just go up to a touchscreen and follow a fitness class on, on the TV. We provide coworking space that's been, become a huge amenity really since COVID. A lot more people are working from home, they want a space where they can go, work, get out of their unit, but still be involved in the community. We have Java lounges, pet spas, we've, we've even started putting golf simulators in some of our properties. In terms of units, we typically finish them out in the top, top of the line, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, full backsplashes, full-height tile in the bathroom, wood look flooring. We do this because we want to attract customers and achieve high rents. Our typical resident is a young professional or a young couple, usually somewhere between 25 and 45. You know, they make good money and they're just not in the market to own a home for many reasons. Maybe they're building one, waiting for it to be constructed. Or they just want the freedom to lock their doors and go travel or go work from their buddy's house in San Diego because they can do so now. We've also seen and heard a good number of folks that are looking at downsize. They're in a 3,000-square-foot home right now, their kids have left to go to college or they started their own families. They don't want to deal with the hassle of maintaining it anymore. We feel like this project can provide an opportunity to them to stay in the community. These particular units in the project we're proposing are going to rent somewhere north of $2,000 a month. Industry standard says you have to make roughly three times that in income to qualify to live at one of these properties. That means on average, our tenants will be making salaries of $72,000 a year or above. No, there's an abundant, excuse me, there's an abundance of this renter profile in DFW and this is the type of renter we go after. Our track record and the success we've had in our past and current projects tells us this is a winning formula. In addition, we are currently developing projects in very similar sub-markets and adjacent to similar uses. In Jacksonville, we've torn down an old Regal Theater and are putting back 334 units, four-story, adjacent to a well-established single-family neighborhood. In Kennesaw, we're just about to start construction on another old Regal Theater that's adjacent to the Town Center Mall. We've got three major mixed-use master plan communities in central Texas, you know, that have a combination of office, retail and multifamily. We are evaluating lifestyle centers, shopping malls, shopping centers across the country because retail owners and retail developers are looking for differentiation. You know, they want a shot in the arm for their shopping centers and multifamily is one way to do it. It's incredibly mutually beneficial. You know, restaurants and stores benefit from more customers and residents have places to shop and dine just a few footsteps away. So it's a very attractive area for multifamily developers to come in and build housing. I say all this not as an advertisement for Presidium or to pound our chest in regards to our track record, but I want to get across the experience, quality and thoughtfulness that we do put into our projects. We intend to develop the best apartments in the sub-markets that we're in. It's what we've done across our portfolio to date and it's what we'll continue to do. I also want to make one thing abundantly clear, this is not being proposed as subsidized or Section 8 housing. We are seeking no subsidies from Highland Village or any other governmental program. We intend to build Class A market rate units. So as you heard from Matt, Sean and Josh, the main focus was, is and will be to ensure the success of the shops. A lot of thought and research went into determining the best product to introduce here. You know, as Josh mentioned, we presented two and sought feedback from the community. We heard that feedback and tried to incorporate as much of it as we could. And then last November is when we submitted our package to the city. And for the last six months, we've been working with third, third-party reviewers and staff to try and address as many of those concerns as we, as we could. We want to and we try to have a positive impact in the communities we build in. We try to address as many community concerns as we can, but we still need to create a viable as we can, but we still need to create a viable product. You know, we're asking people to make a $75 million investment in Highland Village. That's the estimated cost of this project. Viability is key. You know, it's a significant venture, not only for our team, but also the teachers, policemen, and firefighters that Matt mentioned, whose pensions make up this fund. It's a delicate balance, concerns versus viability, and sometimes it's tricky to navigate. But we do feel that the project we are presenting is our best attempt to find that balance. We've reviewed the staff report. I know you all have seen it. We know there are concerns and we know there's going to be further discussion required. We just know that. We look forward to collaborating with the city and staff to address those concerns to the best of our ability and I'm confident we can resolve them together. So with that, turn it back to Sean.
Yes, thank you. I think that's an important point that we really do have a great relationship. You know, the city, the shops. I think we went into this thinking that, you know, we'd have some dialogues, maybe this was six months and we could see where we end at 21. It's been two and a half years and certainly a lot of planning and appreciate the time. As we mentioned from Matt, you know, we continue to invest in this asset. We have mandates from our pensioners to continue to perform and produce the best shopping experience we can. I don't think we've ever wavered in our goals for the shops. And, you know, I think we really want to focus on bolstering the local businesses here and sort of playing a little bit more offensive in a creative way that knowing the constraints of the city, which are, you know, limited, built-out opportunities, to kind of reconsider how things might have changed in the past 15 years. Again, this is sort of extracurricular for us. We didn't have to do this. We have, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of plans and pursuit costs to think about this creatively. $75 million doesn't just walk down the street and certainly for a pensioner concerned about their retirement. It needs to make sense for them. But yeah, I think this plan put forward in front of you does make sense for you all as well and certainly the citizens as a product that does not exist today that could benefit in certain situations. Specifically for the municipality, we are estimating somewhere close to 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars of tax benefits, 360K of which goes directly into the coffers of the City of Highland Village. We believe on an annual basis, annual basis, that is enough to help support any of the offsets of the negative impacts of this development. Of the 1.3 to 1.5, we are estimating somewhere between 800 and 850K to the ISD. So again, these are massive incremental improvements for something that we were ready to just kind of say, status quo, let's maintain status quo. This is a unique value-add opportunity and I'll open it up for, I guess, public comments.
Hi.
Yeah, we can ask him questions afterwards.
Yeah. All right. Thanks. Autumn, we have any? Wish to speak?
Not, not.
If the resident who read asks, his name is Chris Nelson. He filed out a request there, but he wants to speak.
Okay. Yep. Yes. Chris Nelson, okay. And yeah, I guess we will. All right, I'm now going to open the public hearing at 8:05. We currently have 17 people that wish to speak. 16 are here and one of them is in this big packet. So when I find you, I'll call you up here in the middle of all this. So I apologize now. I don't think I skipped you when it comes time. First person, Robert Sanderson. Come up, please state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Green light, yellow light will come on at two minutes and then red light, it's time to stop.
Okay. Hi, my name is Robert Sanderson. I live at 129 Addison Drive in Highland Village, which is just about a block away from here. I'm going to start out not speaking about the apartment and their proposal, but I'll get to it. Bear with me. Recently, on April 17th, there was a fire about four houses away from mine and that house burnt down completely. Our fire department responded within minutes and they sat there and they watched it burn. And my neighbor is a firefighter and I asked him, Kevin, why'd they watch it burn? And he explained to me that for firefighter safety, there has to be more than one truck on the scene, preferably three. So Highland Village only has one truck and so we had to wait until we got support from Lewisville and/or Flowermount. So while that happened, the house burnt down. You could drive by today and it's just a slab and have to rebuild from the start. That being said, this proposal, then I've heard him talk a lot about infrastructure, but obviously to me, because I was talking to somebody earlier today and she lives over by Doubletree, and she said there's been like four fires in the last couple of months and two of those houses were total losses. And the one across by me, again, was a total loss. So the infrastructure, they talk about roads and things like that. I didn't hear anybody mention the fire department. And our fire department, because I've lived in Highland Village for 17 years and I've watched it grow, 407s, four lanes instead of two, 2499 is no longer a dead end, but the fire department is the same size that it was. So the fire, insurance companies rate communities based on, one of the things is their ability to protect the people and the homes. And Highland Village has recently been downgraded by the insurance companies from a three to a four. Five is the worst. So all of our insurance rates have gone up because of our lack of fire protection. That will put a bigger burden on our fire department and we may go from a four to a five. I don't know. There's been a reluctance by the city to expand the fire department because they don't want to raise taxes. Personally, I would take a slight tax increase for more safety and a lower insurance premium. So I would say that until we get the infrastructure in place to protect the four-story building with additional 200 and some families in it, that we get the infrastructure in place before we even consider expanding anything like that.
All right, Nicholas, I apologize, I'm going to butcher your name. Patricia? Please state your name and address.
That was pretty good. Nicholas Petruska, 2801 Butterfield Stage Road. I live just to the north of where this is going to be proposed to be built. So really what this comes down to for me and the people in my neighborhood is two things, three things really. Number one is traffic. Traffic is going to be horrible. And the density, he keeps on talking about density. Yeah, he wants to densify this. He wants to put more people into this area. So the traffic is going to go up, the people are going to go up in a very small area that is just, it's not zoned for, obviously. And they're trying to rezone it into their own image and it's going to destroy the area. There's just too, it's just too dense. So that's one. Two is that four-story monstrosity is going to take the privacy away from the people who are living on that north side completely and totally. Yes, they will be enriched. They will have so much money. They'll have, you know, billions again for their shareholders, their stockholders, but what about the people that live in your community, the people that you represent? So that's it. It's either them or us. It's either you look out for their interests or our interests. And I just, I'm begging you because I live right there and there's plenty of people that live there. This guy talked about how it was his baby. There's actual babies there. There's actual people with babies and kids there and people will be able to look right in their backyards. It's real simple. I'm just asking you to vote against this and to not go forward with this.
Dan Leverti? Dan Leverti? Nope. Oh, there is, okay.
He's a very tough act to follow. Very eloquent presentation and...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest that you go ahead and mention the next name of the person to speak so they can kind of be on deck.
Sounds good.
And kind of keep things going. And I'll leave it up to the chair to decide, but I suspect there'll be a lot of applause tonight that everybody's supporting a lot of these speakers. Time could be saved a little bit by not necessarily applauding between speakers, but I'll leave it up to the chair if he wants to do that. I think everybody knows how the crowd feels. All right, all right.
After this will be Jeff Hickman.
Yeah, I'm Don Leverti and my wife and I reside at 3,000 Lakeside. And before I talk about my remarks here, I want to also just acknowledge you guys and appreciate the sacrifices that you make of your time and energy to make sure that Highland Village is still a good place to live. But I adamantly pose to any new apartments under any circumstances at any time in the future here. And for the reasons that have been stated, and there are other people that will probably state them, you know, better than I can, but I wanted to just focus on one dimension of this and that we seem to be being asked to help these executives meet their business plan and at the sacrifice of our quality of life. And that I don't think we should be snookered into that. And I even see some of the online discussions I've been involved in that there's kind of a false narrative here that Highland Village is teetering on the brink of some sort of insolvency or terrible financial crisis and needs to get any penny, all the pennies it can. And when I look at the city's books and when I look at the AAA bond rating, I see a real solid entity here. There's also a narrative that is either false or exaggerated or distorted that, you know, retail is going through an inflection point, which is true, and that these brick-and-mortar stores are just dying on the vine. And that may have been true during COVID, but it's turning, it's coming back. And when I read the business sections, it talks about there's more demand for retail rental space than there is a space available and specifically even in North Texas. And so I looked at the real estate ads for commercial real estate. I know this is not scientific and people can probably be more precise about this than I can, but basically there aren't any units, any spaces being advertised for rent at the shops. And there's 66 businesses there. I drove through it today. I was only able to find two vacancies. One was the Fish Restaurant and the other was a mobile phone accessory store, which is only vacant because it's moving to a different location within the shops. I may have missed something, but I think that the future is probably a lot more viable than we're being led to believe. So I'm asking we don't get snookered by basically a PR campaign here and make a decision that would be very, very catastrophic and irreversible. So, thank you.
Jeff Hickman. And then after that, Tamara Thigpen, change of mind? Do you want to come up? No?
Yeah.
Okay.
You did say Jeff Hickman, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jeff Hickman, 48 Remington West, about three miles. So I don't have to look at it every day like a lot of you folks are going to have to. My initial concerns coming in here, we're with parking density there and traffic density, especially on the road, northbound and southbound. After hearing their presentation, I have a totally, I think it's sticking the camel's nose under the tent. I see them diversifying out of retail and this looks like the first straw to fall. Once they get a four-story building approved on that corner of a five-acre parking lot, if they don't get what they need for in rent on the other five acres in the south, say southwest corner, what's to prevent them from scraping that and putting up another four or six stories? Then moving over to what used to be the Kroger, Painted Tree, there's another four or five acres there you can put six or seven stories on. How many four, or how many high-rise ladder trucks at 400,000 or 500,000 apiece are you going to put on that to this gentleman's point about fire? On top of that, what about medical? It'd be a real shame for folks around here to get pronounced dead in the back of an ambulance because it can't make it from, the only hospitals I can think of are Denton North on 2499 or Flowermount, I believe it's Baylor Scott and White, a couple miles south of 407 on 2499. If they can't get through those intersections because we just keep, and we have no control over development west and north, there's a lot of open land still out towards Argyle and north, towards Denton all the way to 35. You put in a few hundred units here, a few hundred units there. They've already put in across the street from, I think it's the Toll Brothers Community on 407 West halfway to Lantana. There's a whole new scraped lot where they're putting in a multi-unit development there. That's all coming through this intersection and it's only going to get worse in the next 10 to 15 years. We might be having this conversation every five to 10 years, trying to prevent six, eight, and 10 stories.
Yvette, get ready.
Hi, thank you for letting us all speak. My name is Tammy Thigpen. I live at 482 Selmair Lane. Please don't get snared by others in this decision. I've always believed that these elected, those elected and others appointed within our city have the citizens' best interests when making every decision in your power. The city manager and city council said that the McAdams group gave them everything they asked for and praised them openly in meetings accordingly. That work was at the cost of about half a million dollars approximately. As a citizen, I believe interest, ideas, suggestions presented by the group are for evaluation and review to determine the positive living enhancements to the citizens in which you represent, and I see none. I strongly oppose any zoning change and will be happy to collect over and above the already 500 signatures I've given you opposing this change. In regards to the comment that Joel made, respectfully, I disagree with the need to energize to gain vitality. I think we already have it. In regards to Sean's comment about gems and jewels, I think the citizens are your gems and your jewels. Now, someone sent me a text real quick saying there's well over 5,000 apartments under construction now and within the next year or so, within three miles of the shops. Why do we have to change what Highland Village is about in our culture and why people move here to maximize the profits of people on the East Coast? I thank you for your time.
Chris Oldham, get ready.
Yvette, right?
Yes.
I'm next, okay. Hi, my name's Yvette Hutcheson. I live at 2660 Fernwood Drive in Highland Shores. I moved here 22 years ago. I've been here 22 years because I wanted to move here and raise my two children. They went to McCullough, Briar Hill, and Marcus. We moved here for that specific reason and because Highland Village provided us with that small hometown feel, small, emphasis on small, that we wanted. With all due respect, I cannot fathom that LISD would say that they have no problem with more families in this area. 10 years ago, when my son was at Briar Hill, they had, the LISD district was trying to redistrict so that a lot of the kids, one of them being my son's best friend, who lived on the north, on the other side of the shops, they were trying to move them and he went to Heritage Elementary. They were trying to move them from Briar Hill to the middle school in Castle Hills, whatever it's called. And the citizens stormed LISD because they did not want to. And the citizens stormed LISD because they did not want to. Our schools are busting at the seams. And we love the fact that other areas can apply to come here because we have coveted schools. But in order to make room for 200-plus more families, that is going to put a huge strain on our schools. Not only, I can't believe that anyone is saying that it's not going to affect traffic. Our traffic is already ridiculous. And, and, you know, having all of these extra cars are not going to, I mean, it's just not, it's just common sense. It's not going to work. I understand that we want to generate more revenues for the city. I get that. And I also understand that we want to generate more revenues for the shops, which, from the presentation, sales are up, but traffic is down. Well, I would suggest to you that maybe instead of going to the same old playbook and building high-density apartments, we look at the, at the stores that are trying to be attracted here. Why can't we go, I mean, they put up a presentation of Gymboree, Delia's, and Children's Place. I come from a national retail background. I can tell you that all of those stores were already going down. They closed everywhere. There is not a single Delia in the United States. We can do, instead of trying to build apartments, why can't we try to entice places like Forever 21, Build-A-Bear? This is a family-oriented place. We have a lot of teenagers, and they have to go to either Frisco or they have to go to Grapevine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Solo, get ready.
Patricia Oldham, 3405 Sherwood Lane, Highland Village. We moved, my husband and I moved to Highland Village about 12 years ago, and we didn't move here because we wanted high density. We moved here because we wanted to get away from those types of things. Apartments, historically, they don't age well, and they certainly aren't going to enhance the property here in Highland Village. And quite frankly, I have a small pension, and I appreciate that, but I don't appreciate someone from outside of the community coming in and trying to guilt me into wanting a four-story or more building in my backyard to support a pension plan that is all the way across the country, many thousands of miles away from where I am. There's two entrances and exits to the shops that I see. Another 500-ish cars going and coming from work at rush hours is going to create more of a bottleneck and congestion that exists now on 407 and 2499. I'm retired now, but I drove up and down that street every single day for six years, going to my job in Fort Worth. The apartments of the district, they're not full, so what makes you think these apartments are going to be, stay rented, or the foot traffic is going to support this, the shops? I shop at the shops, but I'm not there every week. You know, there's only so much jewelry and makeup and soap that I can buy and use on an annual basis. There's plenty of apartments in Flower Mound, Lewisville, and Corinth to satisfy the need for rental property for anyone ensuing 10 or so miles would possibly want. We're going to need more police, and we're going to need more fire services. I don't see this development, how it's going to enhance, I see how it's going to enhance their profits absolutely and very handsomely, but it's not going to enhance the property here or Highland Village residents' lives. So I'm asking you to deny the changing of the zoning to include these apartments at this location if you appreciate the fact that this room is filled with people protesting this zoning choice. Thank you.
Tamara Kidwell, get ready. I guess, Mark Solo?
Sorry, I didn't hear you before. I'm Mark Solo. I've lived here 30 years. I'm not a politician, but I was asked to run for precinct where I live because we got re-zoned, and I knocked on a lot of doors during my campaign, and I asked most everyone if they wanted the apartments, and I found two people that did. One of them's been here illegally for over 20 years and didn't own the home. The big thing that I want to concentrate on, that we kind of danced around a little bit, is when you get to four stories, guess what? You have to have a ladder truck. Ladder trucks take almost a year to get now, fully equipped, they're about $2 million. And you have to have special firemen, 12 of them, to run it with all the shifts that are ladder-trained. So we'll probably have to build another fire station, which we probably need, but it'll be, have to be bigger to hold the ladder truck, which is really just designed for the apartments because of the height. So that doesn't really solve our fire problem. It actually adds a burden on us. And it's about $1.3 million, which I guess would be a wash in salaries every year, just for those extra firemen that run the ladder truck. So anyway, that's about it, but I don't, I don't see why this makes sense for anybody except for some people that are looking for another way to make a buck, but the bucks, the burden is going to be on us, the homeowners, financially. If you, if you want to, if you want to do something positive, add retail. Did you know that they're putting in a Cheesecake Factory? Why hasn't that been brought up? You don't, you don't think something as big as a Cheesecake Factory would, would do the research before they put it in? Of course it's going to work. Thank you.
Gary Enman, get ready. Patricia? Called you before? Nope. All right. Gary Enman?
Can y'all hear me? Gary Enman? Oh, y'all put me in... Wrong pile.
But Gary Enman's here.
Wrong pile. Let me check these. We don't know if you wanted to speak or not. No, it was, it was blank. All right. He's in opposition. Janet Hood?
Sure he was in opposition?
I did accept the invitation at our last session to go look at the site in Frisco and took a fellow Highland Village resident with me. And we took...
Can you state your name and address, please?
No, it's been back since the last time.
No, your name and address.
Oh, mine, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, well, you call my name. Janet Hood Hanchy, and I live at 914 Misty Oak, not far off of 2499. So I would just guess if we took a sample, we'd hardly find anybody who hadn't been already rear-ended on 2499 in morning or afternoon traffic. But back to Frisco, what we, what we did observe there, and it was recognizable, you know, from the, from the slides at our session, but I didn't find the finishes to be nearly as luxurious as I might have expected. And I don't know, it may have been that it was so new, maybe more things were coming, but the halls had like fluorescent harsh light and stained concrete floors, and I realized it's pet-friendly. Did see the, the outdoor conversational areas and the pool areas, but they were small and the balconies, I mean, you could probably hear everybody talking everywhere all at once. And the other thing that I noticed was that if the intent was to develop retail, it just so happened that I had an aunt back in 2010, living across the street from there. And there was, at that time, one Thai restaurant across from one Mexican restaurant, and there hadn't been any added since then. There was one pizza place, very close, you know, to the, to the site, but it was very congested, and the parking garage was, was not attractive, not helping. So I just wanted you to know that I did at least want to, did go look, take a look and see. And I wouldn't add anything into the volume question, but I do think that people do treasure their, their green lifestyle here and, and don't, don't sacrifice it lightly. Although, I too am a frequent shopper and frequent diner at the shops and would welcome any, any further people who would like to come along and would be glad to tell them how much I love shopping and dining there. And I'm a pensioner. So I get that with the pension situation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Oh, he's coming.
Call my name?
Yes. Richard Lyle, you'll be next.
La Bayeit Limun. I live in 137 Gale. Been here for eight years now. We own three homes, and we love this place. I oppose to this project, strongly oppose, and I got reasons for that. One of them is that I believe that Josh and friends, they can go somewhere else to get their return on investment, right? Not here, because we have a very unique community. We got a uniqueness that separate us from any other city in North Texas or any other state in the US. We should not compete for more people. We should not compete with the same, for the same things that other cities are struggling with. We have the opportunity to follow the trends that are happening. There is a trend called, what is it, workstation? Occasion, right? Where you can live and work in a very relaxed environment. And I think Highland Village has the opportunity to develop something on those lines, as opposed to use, get more revenue with more people, with more density, that as you can tell, most of us don't agree with, right? So I love this city. I want to retire here. And I want to help you attract other type of projects, because I think we have the potential. I think we have the uniqueness of being next to the lake. We can exploit that. We can, we can think about it. We can have these people, we can have new guys like me. I've been here only for eight years, and I want to stay another 40 more years. We can work together on something different, but not changing the landscape of this beautiful city, not changing the demographics and the density mainly. Things that we can do. Maybe, maybe townhomes, right?
Guys, let him talk.
I'm trying to remain a middle point, right? Not too much density, but considering something like that. Activity centers, right? We don't have an activity center. I got a boy that is in middle school, right? And, and right now, they got a beautiful place to go to the shops, right? Beautiful. So why don't we think of developing that land for our youth? Something for the community, right? Infrastructure for the people that we have created this town. As I said before, maybe develop something on the, around the lake. We got two beautiful parks, or three or more, I believe, right? That we can develop something around that and bring revenue from outside, as opposed to try to get the revenue here.
All right. Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
After that, it'll be Michael Avary.
My name's Rick Lytle. I live at 2810 Twin Coasts Drive. Thank you for the free speech opportunity, and thank you for the privilege of living here. This presentation missed me. It missed me, us. It was all about them. I heard no stated purpose of the project other than tax revenue and how great these organizations are. No mention of quality of life, family environment, education, safety, and general property values, which will decrease because this will lessen the unique atmosphere and draw of our sweet community. As folks who, ask folks who, who own homes across the street, like some have talked already, tax revenue and housing values are skyrocketing. We don't have a problem with growth. We've got some of the best growth in the nation. And it's interesting that people are saying sales are up with less traffic. That's actually good. Home sales are up. And the goal that I heard POG talk about was support shopping center. I think you can look at the shopping centers that have ugly surroundings that turn into outlet stores like an I-35 in Lewisville. That's declining. And I would ask you to do some research on POG and the current lawsuits. Energy, they say, hey, we need energy. So, okay, let's build a parking garage. That'll bring energy. AW talked about assets, their headquarters. Here they are, great things, 800 clients. A pension fund, many of the pension funds in the US are under bankruptcy today. Why is it important to AW? That's what they talked about. So they said they have fantastic operators. They're going to bring a strong, we have strong demographics. Presidium talked about how many units they built, they're best in class. That's great. But all said, this successful shopping center, people were saying it's successful. We've got a 10-mile draw. Cheesecake Factory's coming in. So let's build a parking lot. Doesn't make sense to me. We're being flooded by people. All retail in, in the US is down, and building apartments and garages don't fix that. Look at the Riverwalk. The shops there are struggling. It's not taking off. We, we need awesome shops like Marty B's. And incentives for healthy commerce, options for current residents, not national developers. We want this to be a gem, they said. So great, let's build a parking lot. That'll make it a gem. We need no more tax revenue, we're doing great. Zoning at odd location, odd design, like putting a small parking garage in the middle of your backyard. It decreases value of current infrastructure. It, it injects a conflict, in my opinion, of all the planning and development that this great city has done to date. Homes, values, parks, traffic, safety, it doesn't make sense to me. It seems like a real estate grab, a tax advantage for developers and real estate professionals. And this project someday will be sold, and all this conversation will be over, and everyone will be gone. It'll be left to us. I didn't hear any stated improvements for overall quality of life. And let me just, just stop here. I don't, in my opinion, when I heard this, I didn't hear a clarion call that supports and enhances human flourishing for our families and for our children. They immediately focused on them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Evans, get ready.
Michael Avary. Good evening, gentlemen. Michael Avary. I live at 6216 Via Italia Drive in Flower Mound. Thank you for welcoming someone from another community. I also, as a New Yorker, want to extend a Texas welcome to our friends from Boston. Look, the fundamental issue is not assets, it's not pension plans, it's not finances. All of those things that these gentlemen suggested are a strong argument for building the project that they want to build. And as a former professor of finance and marketing at the Fordham Graduate School of Business, I would give their presentation a B+. Now, the reason that I would give them a B+ is because they did not take into account the stakeholders. The stakeholders are these fine citizens of Highland Village and of Flower Mound and of the communities that surround that area. And if you decide to approve this project, you will certainly have approved their assets and their portfolio management and their return to their pensioners and the tax revenue and all of that. And you will be well in your right to do so if that were your sole criteria. But if you approve it, you will fundamentally change the character of Highland Village, of Flower Mound, and of the surrounding areas. Fundamentally change it. So I urge you, please, to vote no, as otherwise the character of this fine community will be forever changed. Thank you.
Hunter Rose, get ready.
Sorry.
Hunter Rose?
Could you perhaps lead forward when you speak?
Maybe I'll move this up.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Emily Evans, and I live at 2802 Butterfield Stage Road, and my house shares the wall with the shops. Thank you for letting me speak. I've lived in Highland Village for 28 years of my life. I went to school at Milliken because Briar Hill didn't exist yet. I went to Marcus. My kids went to McAuliffe, Briar Hill, and my last one is at Marcus. I teach at McAuliffe Elementary, so I'm invested in this community. I feel like there is great insincerity from the applicant, and I know this might be petty and minor, but I think it speaks to the core of their appeal when they keep saying the shops at Highland. The name of our town is Highland Village. And at least if this is your baby, you... And at least if this is your baby, you should know the name of our town. You are asking us to support the pensioners that are teachers from somewhere up north. Well, just on the street that borders the shops, there are at least six educators and their families. There are police officers that live in our neighborhood. There are city employees that, that live in our neighborhood and you would be diminishing the property value and quality of the homes and property of those local teachers, police officers, and government workers. Why would we put the interest of those in Massachusetts over the interests of the people that live in Highland Village? These units look into my backyard, my windows, my pool, my children's rooms. What happens when the screening trees die from an unprecedented freeze, like one is dying behind my house right now? And then all of a sudden, the sound, the lights, the noise, the barking, the smoke, the music is directly in my backyard. What happens when my children are almost hit, like they have been hit nearly weekly by people illegally U-turning at the street and the light that already happens when you add more traffic? I know a traffic study was done, but I can tell you every morning and every afternoon when I leave and when I return to my home, it's dangerous, as it is now, without additional traffic. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I 100% oppose this zoning change. Thank you.[690.61][690.61](applause)
My name's Hunter Rose and I own the Ben &amp; Jerry's at the shops at Highland Village, so I'm going to give a little bit of a different viewpoint. I am one of the original tenants. We've been there since the center started. We were one of the first people to sign up. I can tell you that 74% of our revenue happens in six hours. It's between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday nights. That's it. There is no daytime traffic. There's none. There's no daytime living inside of Highland Village. It's a bedroom community. We don't have people getting coffee and walking their dogs at the center. It just doesn't exist. If we had this type of high-end apartment with income to support those types of stores, then you end up getting more revenue to buy your fire trucks, to improve your schools, and things like that. Property values do go up when you have a vibrant community and have the type of center where people are sharing ideas and communicating over an ice cream cone instead of shopping online. The reason we have more or the same revenue with less store traffic is because people are purchasing an Uber and DoorDash. That's 25% of my business now. My revenue hasn't necessarily gone up. Your traffic has gone up because of Uber drivers. We don't have the in-store community traffic that we used to. And that needs to change. So I, I'm definitely for the, the high-end apartments that would, that would bring the type of people and the type of improved density inside of the center. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we have one more person that wishes to speak and I cannot find them yet. Chris?
Is it Chris? Did you say Chris?
Burton, yes.
Oh, Madsen. We have, okay. We'll look for you.
We'll look for you, too. Go ahead.
Okay. It probably got put in the wrong pile.
Yep.
Thanks. My name is Chris Madsen. I'm at 3204 Hilltop. And I'm actually in the insurance business, in property casualty insurance. And so what the first gentleman said is 100% true. Underwriters do look at the ability of police and fire to be able to get to properties. And if you're going to be increasing traffic, which you will, there is going to be a negative effect on that rating. But the thing I actually really want to address is the claim that this is going to improve the revenue of the shops at Highland Village. If each of those 280 families spent $35,000 of their $72,000 average income, they would only bring a 10% increase to the revenue at the shops there. I'm not entirely sure if that would be enough to fill the 20 supposedly vacant spots, but I just don't see that actually doing what they say it's going to do. It might bring some people in, but that assumes they have full occupancy 100% of the time. It also assumes that people are still going there, who used to go there, who may now not go there because they can't park because there's 300 fewer parking spaces.[908.73][908.73](laughter) So I'm not entirely sure it's actually going to do what they say. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.[916.38][916.38](applause)
My name is Burton Strauss. I live at 42 Remington. People have talked about a bunch of things I had on my list, traffic and fire. And I will mention that this is a planned development. The people who are on Butterfield Stage Road are the ones who are being impacted because they made life choices based on the zoning that was already in place. The applicants coming to us, asking us to make changes to what has been in place. But I wanted to pull out three things that came to mind. One, the proposed ordinance allows a hotel motel. Okay? I don't think that's a usage that the citizens would support and I recommend if we bring this forward in any way, that we strike that. Okay? I don't think we want to turn 280 apartments into motel rooms if they can't rent them otherwise. There's also nothing in the ordinance that prohibits short-term rentals. Airbnb, Verbo, something like that. There's a density problem with that that many cities are struggling with. I would recommend if we do bring this forward in any way, that we require a minimum rental of three or six months. We don't want somebody new moving into the apartment every day. The third thing that comes to mind looking at this is if you look at the, the design, there's that green squiggle in the middle that is the common area for the building. If we have 280 apartments, somewhere between 200 and 500 children, where are they going to play? The courtyard is not big enough for 200 children to play. They're going to play in the shops, increasing a problem that we have of children running around unsupervised. Okay, we have a standard, we have standards of conduct for the shops, but are those going to be enforced? There's nothing in the ordinance that says that, that people moving in will be informed of that. We'll also have to look where they're going to go. They're going to go to the pond, they're going to go up 2499, they're going to cross the street, they're going to go over to Flower Mounds, soccer fields. There, there's no room for those children even above the density. The other couple things where we've mentioned are the fire height, safety, and the traffic. So that's, that's it. But I think if we bring this forward, we need to control the hotel motel short-term rental at a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you.[1079.92][1079.92](applause)
You've got?
Okay.
Okay. It's, I'm sure in this stack.
Yeah, pack. Sorry. My name's Ann Mitchell and I live at 410 Moran and I've lived in Highland Village for 30 years. All three of my kids went to school here and I just, there were some red flags that really bothered me. The changing the zoning for the whole shops, not just for that little part, but the whole shops, which means all kinds of things could change there. Not just one four-story building, but maybe two or three, or I don't know what the height limit might be. So that was the first red flag that really scares me, is rezoning that whole area. And then the precedent that that sets for other pieces of property within our community. I personally was saved by our fire department rescue squad. I had a heart attack and had to have some surgery and I loved that they were there for me. I saw the fire and that happened, what, three weeks ago, four weeks?
April 7.
And was devastated, the fact that they had to wait for all these other communities to come to our aid. So I think that we have more work to do before we agree to rezone anything in our community when we're having difficulties taking care of the people that are already here. And I think that most of the people are here are because of the community. And we did all this work with Parks and Recreation and there wasn't anything about, you know, four-story apartment building in the Parks and Recreation plan that I can remember reading. That's all. I'm opposed to this.
Thank you.
If anybody else?
Did anybody else, before I start into those?
Yeah, it looks like we missed a couple.
I signed up.
Probably, just get in line.[1236.15][1236.15](laughter)
Hello. My name's Paula Carlson. I'm 2629 Beersat here in Highland Village. I have a story. We moved here in 2017. We lived in Spring, Texas, which is North Houston. We lived in, it was a 5,000-square-foot home. It was a very nice neighborhood. They put apartments in, the four-story apartments. And about a year or two, we moved up here. And I'll just tell you, I love this area. I followed on an app, the news, what was going on. There were murders, there were meth labs, there was, the violent crime skyrocketed. The traffic that came in was, it was a mess. They had to bring the bus system up from a real busy congested area. So there's that. They had to expand the school. Then they had to build two or three more schools because of so many people moving in. Sorry, I don't have them memorized. So then, I'm opposing the building because I believe that the local homeowners will be left to suffer the uptick in targeted, targeted crime, as well as extra police, fire, service personnel, and schools will be needed. Therefore, more taxes and bonds will be response, that we will be responsible for. And when the, the business people that are here to profit are gone and into their own areas, we're still here to hold the bag. So I oppose the apartments. Thank you.[1347.83][1347.83](applause)
My name is Carla Limon. I live on 907 Saddle Brook Drive, like three blocks away from the movie theaters. I am opposing to this bill. I have two teenagers. I think more than ever, we need to have a place where our teenagers can mingle together and be interacting one another. There's so much violence going on in our country that, why taking the places that our kids go and not being on the computer? Because I, I prefer my kids to be at the movie theaters with other friends hanging out there than being in their, the iPads or their games. And this bill, I mean, I think you should not pass this bill. They're going to make ton of millions of dollars and the burden is going to be on us. And we should not think about the money because that's not all about. The world is in chaos and our kids now ever needs to be interacting and we don't have many places here to do that. Thank you.[1416.98][1416.98](applause)
All righty. Do we have everybody that wishes to speak?
Sorry. I think you missed mine.
Your name is?
Hi, I'm Chris Wakeham. I live at 2703 Noel Court. Just a quick anecdote to add into what everybody else has already said. I grew up in Highland Village on Spruce Street. I went to Highland Village Elementary, Milliken, Marcus. My wife went to high school with me. We moved away for college, went our separate ways, but ended up coming back together and having a family. We've lived in Plano. We've then moved to Denton. But when it came time for us to consider a school district and a community, Highland Village was the obvious choice for us. And our house now is situated very close to 2499, very close to the shops. If there had been a density, an apartment density there, there's no way we would have come back to that area. So bear in mind, you want to be, you want to be attractive to younger families, people with kids that, that are really the new lifeblood of the community. We have such an amazing community here, let's keep it, let's keep it amazing. That's why they want to, that's why they want to do this. It's an amazing community, let's keep it amazing for us. Thank you very much.[1503.17][1503.17](applause)
I think we'll move on to the did not wish to speak. 123 of you. Do I need to read each one? Or since they've already filled this out, they're in the record, right?
That's up to you, Mr. Chair.
No.
Just know there were 123 of you.
Again.
All opposed.
Yeah.[1536.72][1536.72](applause)
And Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, those 123 along with the others will be part of the packet that goes forward to City Council as part of the record of this meeting.
There you go. We also have protests that have been filed. And in addition to the protests, were long ago, I don't remember how many years, 500 signatures opposing the shop, or the apartment, so something else that will go in the packet. Next, if I, there they are. We also have a letter that would, was asked to be read into the meeting from Fred Bucci. I'm reading as him, so this is not me. "I am representing myself. The message below addresses my concern about the possibility of an apartment complex being built at the shops of Highland Village. I've been opposed to this since it started to be rumored that it might happen almost three years ago, that this might be the way the shops of Highland Village might expand. After spending 10 years on the Highland Village City Council, as well as being on council when this was, this, as well as the Walmart development came into existence, I feel like they should both remain what we wanted them to be, which is what they are. An apartment complex was never considered and is still not appropriate at this location would only further our traffic issues. These are the reasons why. Not only am I concerned about what is being proposed, so it is the majority of the folks that live in and around the possible proposed change, most of the folks, including the ones that live just north of the development in many of our Western neighboring communities. This property was never intended to have apartments and I'm not aware of any of our previous council members or the people that live on this side of town that have had the least bit of interest in that there will be an apartment complex at this location. Now, you know why I am suggesting that we watch to make sure if we can, that the property remains this type of development our Highland Village City Councils in the past have intended it to be. This means they should continue to be a shopping center like they are, as well as the development on the other side, other side of 2499 is. Also, the present developments we all use are essentially the same on the other corners. Those are part of Louisville and will remain such. Finally, let me address a very important reason that the expansion that is proposed might not only be more hazardous, but also a headache for Highland Village residents, traffic. Currently, I do not believe it will change. We have very little say and influence on the feeder roads, the shops currently, so increasing the load by building an apartment complex with a rather large population of folks that drive will be a nightmare to us all. Chin Chapo Road that borrows the shops on the west is owned by Copper Canyon and not by Highland Village. Also, if one looks at the amount of space available with Copper Canyon to expand the road, it appears that widening road is not possible. Second, FM 407 on the south side of the shops is wide, is as wide as it's going to get and there is an expansion of the, yeah, expansion of the population to the west that will cause it to be almost unexpandable for more traffic. Thirdly, 2499 on the east side of the shops can only be expanded by either the county or state funding, or state funding it. And if interested, it will mean totally removing the median vegetation that is currently there. This makes even more dangerous to use the thoroughfare roadway. Traffic north and south, as well as east and west, is bad as it is with the increased burden caused by building apartments within the shops that can only get worse. Hopefully, this explains why I'm advocating that Highland Village continues the way it is, including the shops, which will preserve what we have now and protect it from changes that are not in the best interest of anyone I know on this side of town or Highland Village anywhere else. Fred Bucci, 5006 Esplanade Boulevard, Highland Village, Texas." All right. Also entered into the record are 65 emails against, three emails in favor. And with that, I will close public comments. Nope. Never mind. Not just yet.
This is up to you.
Oh.
If you want to take another one.
Oh, they don't wish to speak?
Any of you wish to speak? All right, I'm gonna close it. Closing public comments, 9:01 PM. But we will add to the record another opposition, did not wish to speak. Alrighty. You guys ready? Yep.
Can we, can we ask questions of the developer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go.
Just to address some, I don't know who wants to represent the developer, but just to ask some questions that have come up during the, during the public forum and what we had prior to the public forum. Mr. Ames, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ames, okay. And I know, and I know you're representing the apartment developer. Were you the one working with Ms. Nussor on the?
Yes, I worked with her, and so did our other consultants.
Okay, okay. She put together, and by the way, a very good comparison of things. Thank you very much for that. And obviously, there are some things that were, that don't meet the current ordinances that you want to change in the PD. Some of those have, are basically what I have questions about. I know, and again, I can definitely appreciate you guys making this presentation, working with the city. I know the first one that you presented, this is vastly different. But part of, but I remember one of the things that stuck out in my mind from the first presentation was the height and the location, location to the north residence, the residence to the north, and how that, that tree screen didn't seem like it was enough. You didn't really address that. Was there a reason why that, why we, that couldn't be like Ms. Nussor suggested, a graduated float back?
Well, we did study that. We did have our architect, O'Brien, look into that. We lost a, to what us, a significant amount of our units in that. And frankly, it made the project not viable, losing that many units. So we did look into it. At some point, you lose enough where you can't continue to move forward with the project because we won't be able to get it financed.
Okay. Also, I was concerned about the removal of the trees, and I didn't see any plan in place to replace what we were removing.
Understood. Well, particular to the landscaping, we would still be required, and we're not asking for any relief, to the requirements of our zoning district. And I think the our zoning district defers to the development regulations, and we would follow what is required in the development regulations. We are requesting, as part of this, to have a 10-foot landscape buffer to the east of the site. It's my understanding via code that you're required to plant a tree every 30 feet on center. We, and I think we've addressed this in the proposed ordinance, we would still plan to put the same amount of trees, but there's a utility inside that buffer, and a lot of the times, the utility companies won't let you put trees on top of it. So we would put it directly adjacent, still have the same number of trees, but in an area where we could actually place them.
It'll look like, at one wing of the development look is awfully close to the property line, like, within 10 or 12 feet?
Yeah, that's, I think on that side, we have a 10, 10-foot setback. There's a setback limits that show you, in the package, that show you what the setbacks are proposed on each side of the building.
Yeah. Okay. And then, obviously, you know, one of the bigger things we talked about last time, and you heard this time, is the traffic study.
Understood.
I know Kim Lee Horn is here, and I'm wondering if they can get a little bit, explain that a little bit more.
Yeah, they can do a much better job than I can.
Where we came up with those numbers.
This is Jonathan Kirby with Kim Lee Horn. He's a senior project manager. Jonathan works on a lot of our projects, and so we have a lot of faith in him and his team.
Thank you.
Good evening. Do you have specific questions, or there's a few slides I can go through?
Sure, let's start with there.
Okay. There you go. Thank you. Okay. So we performed a traffic impact analysis. We studied four intersections as part of that. The four intersections are listed on the screen. Village Parkway and Live Oak, Village Parkway and Justin, Chin Chapel and Justin Road, and then the existing side access points along both Chin Chapel and Village Parkway. So, little bit of talk, just a little bit, about the 2499-407 intersection and the traffic that's there. There is a project that's being led by the town of Flower Mound that they're partnering with Tech Todd on. Well, they will essentially have dual left turn lanes, so two left turn lanes on all four legs of the intersection. That, I checked in today before I came here, the 60% plan set was submitted to the town last week. They plan on going out to bid on it early next year, starting construction on it about May of 2024, and they think that it is a five-to-six-month construction timeline. So that will add a lot of capacity to that intersection, and these improvements are expected to improve the intersection with our development included. We'll get into that in a minute. So these are a little small and maybe hard to see. These are the existing traffic volumes at the three intersections. So you have 407 and 2499 on the far left. AM is orange, PM is the gray. And we were also asked by the citizens coming out of our first meeting with them to study the school. So the school, school times are the gold. The, so what we do when we do a traffic impact analysis is we do studies for 24 hours in a day, for multiple days, and we decide based on volumes when that peak hour is. It's different for every situation, it's different for every setting. For this project, it was 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM in the morning, and then it was 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the evening. So the PM peak hour has the highest volumes based on the data collection that we had. So this is the trip generation for the center as a whole, in existing conditions on the left, AM in orange, PM in gray, and proposed conditions on the right. So you'll see in this that we're adding nine trips in the PM peak hour, which is the most high-volume hour. And the reason for that is because of the traffic saturation. So when you have the apartments, right, we've heard a lot about the apartments utilizing the existing retail that's within the shops. So if you get home from work, and you need to go to the grocery store, you need to go grab dinner, you need to do whatever, that's there. So there is a level of saturation of trips during that peak hour that occurs. We take that into account when we do our traffic impact analysis. That's what you have here. In the AM peak hour, we are adding 96 trips in, in the AM peak hour because you have a lot less of that saturation on site.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Go back. So, just want to make sure I heard you clearly. So with 280 additional units, at 1.8 cars per unit, between 5:00 and 6:00 PM, you're saying, because of the saturation, it's only gonna generate nine more?
Yes. And that's, that's industry standard through the Institute of Transportation Engineers, national data collected, utilized for that. That is, that is the industry standard model.
Please let him speak. I don't think they interrupted when we got our chance, so please let him speak. Thank you. So I just want to clarify because it sounded, it just, I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
Sure.
So thank you.
And remember, it's the peak hour, right? We all have different habits, so there's more units, but those people have different habits, those people leave work at different times. I'm here tonight, I'm not at my house, right? So there's different things happen. I left this morning at 6:00 AM for work, I'll probably see my kids in the morning and leave at 9:00 AM, right? So there's different traffic habits that happen at different times.
Does it change during, I mean, is that during the week or the weekend? Does it change during the weekend?
Yeah, so weekday is generally the worst, but we do study weekday and weekend, so these are weekday counts.
And again, go back to the nine trips based on the national?
Yeah, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So it's a national study, they update every so often.
How do they get that, how do they get the numbers? Do they do?
It's just a mass amount of data collected from across the nation.
Because I agree that that sounds low. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what are they taking into an account? National number, we're in Texas and we are drivers.
Yeah.
Being up in Boston, they're not drivers.
They're not as drivers.
I would assume.
How many restaurants are in the shops? How many restaurants total? How many restaurants are in the shops?
A lot.
Mr. Poe, you know that number? Six? Six? Or seven? So, so only nine people are gonna leave the shops? Okay. I think we're good with this, that stat. Yeah.
I don't think I've eaten at more than six different restaurants in the last month. Again, it's just different people's habits at different times, so.
Okay.
Sorry, these slides are a little hard to read. This is the trip distribution. So when we're out there and we're collecting counts, we see where these trips are going, what roads they're using, how they're leaving and exiting the site. Not a very surprising trip distribution. The vast majority of the trips are either eastbound or westbound Justin, or northbound and southbound Village Parkway. Because of the high traffic amounts that are on these roads right now, the proposed development actually adds, I think the exact number is 1.03% of traffic volume to the Justin Road and Village Parkway intersection. And that's the total net trips. So level of service is what cities use to define the acceptable level of a road. Most cities, D or E is considered acceptable. Some cities have C. Highland Village, I believe, is D, if I remember from correctly. These are the existing operating level of services of the studied intersections. So you see, the one that doesn't meet is Justin Road and Village Parkway. The left-hand number is AM, right-hand letter, I mean, is PM, so it's a E-level service, EM-level service, F, AM, and PM. This is existing conditions.
And it, and it goes from A to B, A being better, is everything?
Yes, AM on the left side, PM on the right side, yes.
No, no, I'm saying the letters themselves represent what?
The, the level of service. So it's the, the delay.
But it's a grade, it's almost like a grade from A to F?
We try to get people to not see it that way, since most cities E is acceptable, or D is acceptable, and, you know, I know D equals degree for a lot of us, but.
Yeah.
So these are the proposed, with the Justin Road and Village Parkway intersection improvements that we talked about at the beginning, that intersection will operate as a level service D in both the AM and PM. So if I just flip back real quick, so you see the one intersection that is being negatively impacted by the development from a level of service standpoint would be the northern intersection, which goes from a level of service B to a level of service C in the PM peak hour. Again, Highland Village has D as acceptable. Any other questions?
No, appreciate it. Thank you.
You have any more?
Only one more. I'm sorry to ask so many questions.
No.
Only one more.
I got some.
And I guess, Mr. Ames, maybe you can answer this, but I know that the, the proposed ordinance would rezone the entire shopping center.
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
The proposed ordinance only focuses
On that five acre.
On the area that the multifamily will sit, not the entire shopping center.
Just that five acre?
Just the five acres.
Okay, I thought that.
Abra, can you confirm that?
Ms. Nussor said something like that, so.
And I'll confirm that.
Okay, okay, I thought I'd read that.
The subject property is only the movie theater parking lot.
The five acre, whatever that is, okay.
To include snuffers?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And just for clarification, even if the base is changed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the call, the description of the property called out in, in the hearing notices and in the ordinance is just the 5.44 acres that's on that north part of the property where, where the complex would be constructed, along with the parking garage. And it does not rezone the entire shop's center, so that.
Just to clarify, Josh is a little bit taller than I am. Just to clarify, the subject property is the location of the existing movie theater parking lot and the snuffers. Both would be redeveloped into this development. The applicant is requesting a very customized zoning district that we call a PD, a planned development. That planned development has a base zoning district of our retail. It's not changing the zoning of the shops overall, and it's not changing our base zoning ordinance. It's just a starting point that they used as their customized zoning district. Make sense?
Yeah. I didn't see how many, and I'm sure it was on there, I just probably didn't read it correctly. How many parking spaces were in the parking garage?
Well, I know Abra mentioned earlier that parking was a complicated issue, so, you know, we can address that holistically if you'd like. Do you want to talk about retail parking?
So, I just wrote this down when I was listening earlier. So the, the total loss of parking for doing this development for the retail is 314 spaces. Now, the reason why our overall numbers work are that right now, per the zoning code, we went in and laid this out for Peloton, but we looked at every single space in the center and allocated the right number of parking for that space, even the vacant spaces, we allocated parking to that. And we're 158 spaces over park per code. When you remove snuffers, that's another 21 spaces that are no longer needed. Then, the 30% sharing that Abra mentioned is because you can share some of the parking between the theater and the office uses. And so that's another 135 spaces, which is the exact number of the 314.
And that's based on the 1.5, not the 1.75?
So I'm talking about the retail.
Oh, oh, just the retail.
When you get to the residential, that's beyond my knowledge, I'll defer to Josh.
Okay.
So, the first objective was to ensure that the retail is parked per code, and that's what Josh just described. We are requesting a reduction in the parking requirements for multifamily. You know, right now, the current design has the multifamily property parked at, I believe it's a 1.64 to 1 ratio. In the zoning, or in the PD, we set a floor of 1.5. And the reason we did that is because right now, we have 1.6 to 1 spaces per unit, but things are ultimately gonna happen as we progress through design. We don't want to go any lower than that, but we need some flexibility as we move forward. The 1.7 that's referenced in the report is actually the supplied parking at the various studies that were in the IT report that was done by Kim Lee Horn. If you look at, I think it's the next page, it shows parking demand, and industry standard is to use 80, the 85th percentile for parking demand. And the 85th percentile in the IT report is 1.47 spaces per unit. So our floor is above So our floor is above what the report says. Our floor of 1.5 is above what the report says. So right now, we're planning to park at 1.64 to 1. You know, we've, across our other properties in North Texas, that we've completed those averages, averaged at about 1.5 spaces per unit. And similar product type, you know, wraps, four-story, five-story structured parking, we have one in Frisco we're building, there's one in Farmer's Ranch we're building, they're parked at 1.57 and 1.41 respectively. So typically, 1.5 is what we like to park our properties at. We find, really, at all of them across the country, it's a good ratio to use. We generally don't have problems.
But just to note, our ordinance of multifamily was, would be the 1.75 for the one-bedroom and what, the 2.5 for three-bedroom? So we would be below that?
Correct, yes.
I had a question about the ingress and egress to the parking garage. And it's kind of small up there, but where is, how can you get in and out of that parking garage? Is it only in the back, or can you also ingress from the front?
You'll be able to get into the parking garage by both sides. So the entrances from 2499 will remain. The northern drive and parking on the screen, if you look all the way to the left, there's a lane that goes into the parking garage. And then similarly, to the south of the site, the existing road off 2499 will remain, and there's another lane to get into the parking garage from the south side.
Okay, so the only way to ingress into this parking garage from the street is southbound on 2499?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. The only other ingress is coming from, I guess, behind, from Chim Chapel, behind the theater, or through the shops to the south?
Correct.
Okay. And you're proposing, I guess that's a drive and parking that is outside of the apartments? It's, what's shown on here is everything behind the theater, or what would be added between the homes and the multifamily?
No, that would be within the multifamily property line.
Within the property line, yeah. But it's the only thing that would be outside of the actual...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And that...
Everything else would be internal?
Correct.
Okay, and so you're counting those spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Those spaces in the first floor of the parking garage would be intended to be retail parking to accommodate the parking code that Josh mentioned earlier.
Do you know off the top of your head how many parking is behind, in between the homes and multifamily living, and how many are actually interior or in the parking garage?
Yes, I can.
Is it like 50/50?
All of the parking spaces that will serve the multifamily will be in the parking garage.
Okay.
The number of spaces inside the parking garage that will service retail on the first floor is... There's 115 spaces on that drive and parking aisle to the north side between the actual apartment building and the single-family property. And then inside the first floor, 115. And then the first floor of the parking garage should have somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 spaces for retail.
I don't know who this question would be...
I'm sorry, there's 49 spaces in the first floor for retail. I read the wrong...
Not 150.
We're going to call a five-minute recess at 7:26. I'm sorry, 9:26.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Everybody?
All ready? All righty. Jared over here had some questions. Well, first, Abra had clarification she wanted to give.
Yep.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm going to continue to defer to Kim Lee Horn on their traffic impact analysis, but as a non-engineer and somebody who looks at these documents frequently, I at least know where to look to try to decipher the information. I did check with Brian, our engineer, as well via text, so that, so he helped me find the information that I think might help understand. So he's not saying that the proposed, and Mr. Kirby can come up here and correct me if any of this is inaccurate, he's not saying that the proposed redevelopment is only going to result in nine trips. That's not what he, I don't think that's what he was trying to portray. Basically, the methodology that goes into a TIA, a traffic impact analysis, is going to look at the existing trips and the proposed trips, and the differences between the existing development and the proposed development. So for example, right now, there's a snuffers that is going to have a high PM inbound and a high PM outbound, right? Because you've got people eating dinner, and you've got people having drinks. That snuffers is going to be gone. So with a multifamily development, you have a very low outbound PM trip, right? People are coming home from work. There's going to be some, and they account for that in these calculations, but for the most part, a snuffers is going to have a lot more activity, you know, coming inbound, sorry, going outbound in the PM than multifamily development. So based on this, they, it's more than nine, for sure, but it says, based on the redevelopment, it's anticipated to generate approximately 390 net new trips during the AM peak hour and 814 net new trips during the PM peak hour as compared to the existing development. But once you change the land use, right, to remove the snuffers, and you've got multifamily, multifamily, what we know of multifamily is they're looking for a more urban lifestyle in their units. So they actually want somewhere that's walkable. They want to be able to walk to dinner instead of drive to dinner. A lot of times, they have less cars, right? Because they don't have as much area to park them. They're generally, the product type is, the data says that it's less car-intensive. The people who live there drive less, the people who live there own less vehicles. So that's data. But I will say, it's more than nine, but due to the shifting in land uses, and some of those people are going to be working in the shops, hopefully, there's office uses in the shops, some of those trips, it's more complex than just nine. I didn't want you guys to think that that's what the TIA said, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
No problem.
So I had a question about how parking in the back, I say in the back, but between the existing homes and the multifamily, kind of where those proposed, if somebody parks back there, how do they get to the other side currently?
We intend to construct a pedestrian walkway to get them from the north side.
Okay, but there's not one in this?
It should be on the site plan that was provided.
Okay.
We have a site plan.
See, it's called...
Site plan.
Oh, there it is?
Yep.
And are those parking spaces between the pedestrian route to the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're effectively cutting through the garage to get to the back?
Or parking in the garage, yes.
And that's covered, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you had asked a question earlier about access or accessibility into the site. There is a left, there is a full cut in the median to make a left off of Village Parkway into the southern entrance, so you won't only be coming south on 2499 to enter the shop. You can access it from the northbound lane at the cut that's between the multifamily and the retail.
Okay.
So 109 spaces there. If I have it right, I don't have my glasses on. 109 spaces are going to be sandwiched between a brick wall with residents and a four-story building, so kind of in a hole. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so... Wife and kids are going to be going, having fun at the shops, grand old time, which we want them to do. And then when it comes time to leave after dark, they're going to walk past a parking garage into an alleyway, basically.
It will be lit per whatever lighting requirements the city prescribes.
Okay, so on that note, we're going to light it up for the neighbors behind them.
But it's already lit, and I would imagine the lighting levels would be similar to what exists today.
Okay.
I've got a question, and I don't know who would answer this as well, but it's one of the things about this development that I'm trying to kind of wrap my mind around is, and maybe a little bit of background from you guys would help. Have you guys done a multifamily on an existing retail before?
We're building them right now.
So there was an existing retail, and you added a multifamily to that retail that was already existing? You've done that project?
We're constructing, we haven't completed one, but...
You're doing it right now?
We're doing it right now.
Here in...
That, we have a project in Jacksonville we're working on.
Okay.
Is that where you were taking down the regal?
Yes.
Okay.
There is no phase two. There's just one phase.
That's what we understood, just one.
That's correct.
Another question would be related to...
Well, sorry, let me, that is just presidium. I think AEW has done this type of redevelopment across their portfolio, and I don't know if you want to come up and speak to that.
A few times.
Okay, okay. When you've done that, was there always a highway or an interstate adjacent to those developments?
Well, the, and Mark, you may have to correct me if I'm wrong here, the one in Jacksonville is not near a highway or an interstate.
It's not?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else? Adam? No? All right, I have some questions. Looking at the, what you provided for the parking analysis, this doesn't really have much to do with parking, just a quick question here. How many, what, in the industry, I guess this is a question for you, in the industry, what is considered a normal vacancy rate in a development like this?
In the multifamily?
No, not the multifamily, in... No, not the multifamily, in retail.
I'd say historically, in the 7% range, 2015 to 18, 19, that crept up and probably in the 10% range, and COVID obviously shot that up and it's coming back down.
Okay, and then, so what is the, what are the shops currently at?
Okay.
So the shops are going to end the year around 82% this year.
All right.
82% vacancy?
No.
No, occupancy.
Occupancy?
Yeah, sorry. Other way. You guys might be aware, we're actually in the process of losing the Barnes &amp; Noble, so they will be going out of business. It's not a direct replacement. It's certainly something to consider as an anchor.
All right, because I've got here a 12-point, this, based on what you gave us with parking, I went and added all up, and it's a 12.7% vacancy, which not far off of the 10% that you're experiencing across the board. So I guess the shot in the arm, I'm not seeing the reason for a shot in the arm when you're just barely hovering on what is the industry norm.
I think the shot in the arm is the story to national retailers. I mean, we have representatives of our leasing team, Josh and others that are here present that can talk about the, you know, the belief that this helps in certainly local businesses. We just had an hour-long meeting with Onsite. A lot of them are supportive. We think it is a shot in the arm for more leasing, for sure.
I mean, and I can't disagree that there would be, that the businesses there would like to have more people. We all would, but at what expense is where I'm kind of questioning that. Also, one of the comments that was made during El's presentation was it was going to, having these apartments there would make it a destination point. I don't understand how it would be a destination point. It's not like all of us are going to be able to use their weight room and go swimming in their pool. How, I mean, how are the apartments going to make it a destination point for all of us?
Yeah, I think we fundamentally believe the shops of Highland today is a destination retail. Sorry, I, I'm sorry, that's twice now. I colloquially refer to it. Shops of Highland Village. We think it is a destination. It is pulling customers outside of your community.
I agree with that currently, but if you put apartments in there, that's not a destination point. The destination point is already there.
Understood, and I think the distinction here is we see this as helping form a landmark for us to know they have an institutional backing the shops. That encourages other retailers to come in. I mean, we, we work on these projects across the nation, and I totally get, we want to get this right, too. We spend a lot of time focused on it. We think this is the right path, and we think, based on relationships with retailers, that it's going to get it done. I mean, we have a tracker with clients who would not trust us to do that. We're asking the same of you.
No, I mean, I agree that, you know, here's the deal, I think you guys are on the right track to get a, get a push in there. I just, I just think you're, you still haven't taken enough of what we were talking about last time. There's still a lot of concerns, a lot of issues, and, you know, you say you want to get it right, but we can't do, you know, we can't radiate the slope because we're losing too many apartments, and financial, it doesn't make financial sense to do that. So to get it right would cost money that I don't know if, right now, it didn't sound like that's financially viable for you guys to do. You know, for me, anyway, it's a, it's a great way to infuse automatic shoppers in there, I understand that, but there are neighbors 80 feet away from you and you're four stories up, and you were four stories up last time, and we asked you to take an acceleration and wasn't there. So, and that's why my first question was, hey, what can we do to do that? Well, we can't do anything because it's not financially viable to do it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, and I think it's fair to critique the plan. I mean, I love the discourse and the passion of the community here. You know, that's, these are all positives, and certainly we've heard the feedback and tried to consider them. It's not been lost on us, for sure, but I think we, we tried to put in front of you all a very thoughtful plan that already pre-considered some of these options to be viable, non-viable. You know, you're, you're trying to morph retail into something else. That's difficult. A master plan mixed-use development, let alone what we put in front of here. We thought it was unique about that, the location, and again, this is, just on this section that's listed here, and this is our full intent. We believe that this is sort of filling the void that is there today, that can be the landmark. You go to Legacy West, you see multifamily right in those entrances. That speaks to the class of what we think inviting people off 2499 could experience in the shops. I mean, we feel pretty strongly about that.
I have a question. Where you've done these multifamily in retail, what was the smallest community size, if you know that off the top of your head, that this was done in? Like, from a population standpoint, if you had to guess?
From a comparable for us, I mean, we've done it in Orlando, similar, off Joint Young Highway, which is similar lane access to like 2499 is today. You know, Orlando is a suburb, it's probably a fraction.
Was it in the municipality of Orlando?
It was just outside.
Just outside?
The city limit, yeah.
Okay, and do you know how big that city was?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
But similar infrastructure, similar landscape.
You know, I, I really think you're kind of putting the onus on the success of certain businesses on the citizens, and I don't think that's fair. You know, the gentleman from Ben &amp; Jerry's, God bless him, you know, adding apartment complexes isn't going to make people buy ice cream at 10:00 AM in the morning, right? And, and so there are a lot of businesses that have a lot of success in there. You know, Lucy Boss, my mother-in-law's coming into town, she's going to spend $2,000, which, by the way, she's in a different task bracket than I am. You know, Blue Goose, they do 10, 15K top-line revenue every night, and so, you know, I think that's not the responsibility of the citizens of Highland Village to, you know, produce, you know, you know, good tenants, right? I mean, it's business, so if you don't have a good product there, you know, it's not our responsibility to, you know, go in there and buy their products, right?
I see your point, and, you know, I think I would just encourage you all to remember that when we do well, you do well. You know, you get a significant tax base, and I, I just think that that means something to you all. I can only do. I think, you know, what, what is unique about this asset, what is unique about the plan in front of here is this is existing land we own. We put together a creative proposal. We're not asking any resources from the city other than maintenance. We, we think the benefits to the, the local businesses that, they're, they're, they're one of our biggest stakeholders here. I mean, maybe they've not been fully represented in the town hall here, but we speak with them very actively, and they, they have concerns about the competition they're seeing, and that's, that's our MO.
Yeah, and again, I understand, you know, where you're, where you're coming from as far as that business plan, that, that business format, and it just happens to be that that vacant place is right next to that neighborhood that, you know, that we're trying to protect here, and, and what the product that's there now does not do that. And if, if, I don't know, go back to drawing board or whatever you think you can, but somehow, we've got to protect what's there now, not what's going to be built there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I get, I get that quality isn't ever, like, doesn't accomplish the concerns totally, I totally hear that. We are comfortable with the designs, want on viability, so I think that continues to be something that comes up.
Sure, understand.
Three-story product, based on the density, literally like, how many units can we fit in here versus the cost of actually constructing it? It's not viable. Like, we, we can, we will be out of business, you know, if that's something that we, it just doesn't work. Other sites we looked at, again, we have studied over significant periods of time. I looked at certain plans in '15. We hired Presidium because they were actually one of the groups that thought they could figure out a way to make this work. We probably interviewed 10 different groups. A lot of them were offering three-story products. A lot of them wanted us to demolish a lot of the retail. A lot of them were trying to focus on Chinchapel. None of it worked. So again, it's, I totally understand, it feels like we're not hearing the concerns and the viability, but this is a very tight window we're trying to, you know, accommodate with, and I do think, you know, we feel very good about the plan we put in front of here from a technical, meeting the thresholds for planning and zoning, and also the benefits for the city. I think that's really significant.
I don't know, meeting the thresholds. I see a whole lot of requests in this stuff that are not our thresholds. You're asking us to give on a lot of those, so I don't know, you might want to choose a different word than meeting our thresholds.
We certainly have a different interpretation of this, of some of those assumptions, and I'm not an engineer, you know, we rely on those parties, for sure, but.
No, I understand.
During the workshop, y'all, when this was proposed, when we had the joint workshop with City Council, it was, we're only going to do one- and two-bedroom units because that's who we're focused, that's the type of clientele we're going to be focusing on. And the big thick packet I got here is a reference to three-bedroom units. Now, and I also was told that there has not been a commitment to number of units that there are going to be, I mean, number of units, yes, but type of, the mix of units, there hasn't been a commitment to. So, I mean, are you trying, is it a shell game right now?
No, it's not. And the reason why is, you know, if, if this moves forward, we still need nine to 12 months to actually design this product. What you're looking at is only conceptual. We have to make sure the unit types fit into, it's, it's basically a big jigsaw puzzle. And, you know, the, the majority of the units, the vast majority of the units will be studios one and two bedrooms, but we have not fully designed this building, and so to commit right now to a set unit mix is unrealistic because that could change and all likelihood will change given the design constraints.
Okay. I had something else in here. Had to do with the sign. I know that you wanted a variance for the signage for this apartment complex. Why does it even need a sign? Everybody, I mean, it's apartments, you can say, go to the apartments, they're, and everybody, everybody's going to know where they are. It's the only one.
I mean, just, well, why do restaurants need signs?
Because the restaurants are different. They're, they're, they're all together.
Right, but.
But this is going to be the only apartment.
But we, we believe we've built a very strong brand, and we want to make sure we put our name on this brand to know this is a Presidium apartment and attract the residents or those that want to live in Presidium built apartments, so.
I mean, I, I don't know, I think that can go back to, we have signage rules already there, why?
And I, speaking frankly, I don't think the signage ordinance is a major, it's not going to address the viability of the project from our end.
It was kind of just something that popped out with all the, all the wants, but doesn't seem like we're getting a whole lot of gives, to be honest.
Well, we were advised to use the retail district as our base.
Okay.
And, you know, speaking to some of your discussions, Sean's a minute ago, there isn't really, I would say, in the retail or multifamily, there isn't really a good holistic zoning that would fit a project like this. And so we tried to craft and make the adjustments we would, yeah, we are asking for adjustments, but, you know, it's, it's generally about viability and, you know, making sure that we present a PD that works with this plan. Yeah, there, there are some things we need to ask the city for assistance with in terms of the PD itself, but it, it needed to accomplish, you know, the buildability, constructability, and viability of the project.
I noticed in your narrative that you guys provided to us, you had discussed that you met with the Rolling Hills HOA.
We did.
And, but you didn't address what was decided or what was said, what was discussed, what concerns they had, just that you met with them.
That meeting took place 18 months ago, I believe.
And were they in favor? Were they against? What was?
Rolling Hills is a well-represented area.
Right, well, we, we, we had two meetings. We had a voluntary community, community meeting in 2021, and we met.
A double.
Right, right. And then we met with the board members of the Rolling Hill HOA separately. And yeah, they did express concerns, similar concerns that were expressed tonight, and, you know, again, we, we are balancing viability with community concerns, and, you know, what we've presented tonight is what we think is our best shot at trying to find balance between those two.
All right. With that balance, have you considered the, and I'm not an appraiser, but there will be a loss in value to those, I think it was 12 homes, that they're going to lose value. So are, how, is there been any discussion about that?
No.
No, okay. All right, I got no more questions. Anybody?
Are you ready for me?
I'm ready for you.
I was just going to make a comment, maybe before you get into this, but, you know, looking at this, and I can definitely appreciate the owners, I mean, I think the city of Highland Village should be flattered that something like this, I mean, it's just not every day, $75 million and something like this, I mean, it's, it's beautiful looking, you know, and, you know, I don't think that needs to be really overlooked. As we've been kind of, as I've been going through this and looking at it, I'm, I'm trying to find ways to just, you know, gosh, can you make it work? Because it is something that's, that's quite amazing, but man, you know, we just, we just went through the last 18 months looking at uses of, of land, and I think the words that were used was the uniqueness of this community, and part of that uniqueness is it's, it's very small, and like I said, you look at how we can utilize this space for the red, the current residents, the existing retail, you know, it, it's just really, when you set something in there like this, in the, in a, in a small community like this, it's, it's obviously that's the challenge, right? But can definitely, you know, again, we should be flattered to have something like, like this even proposed in the city because it, it really is amazing, you know, some of the constraints we have as a city, just the services and some of the things that are going to have to be complicated, I would just definitely, moving forward, those things need to be discussed. I don't know how much revenue would be generated versus how much it would cost the citizens of Highland Village to service that. I think there was maybe something in there, I didn't, I didn't really see, I don't remember off the top of my head what it was, but it's a, it's a concern. And moving forward, like, I'm, I'm very interested in, you know, to kind of see, you know, maybe something a little bit different, unfortunately, but again, what, just, I think the city should be very pleased that somebody would want to invest and, and put something, that type of time and money into something. I just think it's just a little bit of a miss here, so.
I'm going to just add two, two other things that have not been brought up yet, but kind of hit on that as well. You know, we've had several conversations with city members. Again, that's been part of the collaborative process, and again, this is a retail center, built in 2007, it's gone through changes. What we continue to hear from feedback from the city is, you know, the capacity for future development, options are limited. If you're going to put an apartment building somewhere in the business district next to shops for us, I think. in the business district, next to shops for us, I think that makes sense. So I totally agree with the, the residents here that, you know, feel strongly about it, but if you're going to do it, we think this is an area, and I totally get, you know, it doesn't help everyone, but, you know, that's one factor. Other factor that we have not talked about is that reinvestment cycle here. We are losing stuffers. We hope to retain them, maybe put them somewhere else, depending on that. But there was an op, there was a real intent to try to make sure we, we were thinking about the programming, the wayfinding. This entrance is critical for us, not only for the residents that want to be here, the highly amenitized, almost hospitality sort of amenities you're going to have. But we do think there's opportunities to reactivate, and there will be synergies with the community that, you know, we did designate a green space that we have not fully programmed yet. We, that's, that was a selective choice to essentially demolish a retail building to offer that. We do think there will be continued improvements, especially on the opposite side of AMC. That area right now is sort of that splash pad. If you sort of tighten up the, the whole northeast corner, we do think there's opportunities for future enhancements. That could, that could really happen there. Those are things, again, outside of application, but you have an institutional owner that is thinking about the long-term plan with this. And I get that the business plan aspect of that sort of drives some decisions, but these are, these are things that come, have to come to a head, and I think we all have to recognize that.
Thank you.
You're up.
So wanted to talk about a few things that were brought up over the evening. One, there's a massive demand for housing right now. There are nowhere near enough apartments, near enough houses, near enough townhomes in this area for the demand for the people that are coming here. We can't find houses. So, you know, it's, that, that conversation that with 5,000 apartment complex, or apartment units going up in a three-mile area, I'm not sure where those are.
Okay, let's go.
I wasn't asking for comments, I just don't know where they are.
You can show them after the meeting.
Okay, so what I also wanted to say was, I was very happy with everybody here tonight, that I was, that you were respectful and that you took time to at least listen to everybody here versus the comments that we got in some of these emails that I was just embarrassed by. They were just absolutely outrageous on some of the comments. And be fortunate that you don't have to read them. One of the things I want to talk about, of course, is property rights. It works both ways. They own that property, they have property rights. I understand the property rights of the people in Highland Village and the people in the houses that are next to those, fully agree with that too. It was brought up about the schools not being able to handle the amount of kids that are going to be in these. The schools are desperate for students. The LISD is down 6,000 students this year.
That's because of birthright and it's down.
Okay, again, those, those are information that I had gotten at another meeting, so... The, what was the other? So my biggest issue is that I, I wholeheartedly agree that Highland Village needs another fire station. I think that's a, a major topic that we're going to have to deal with at City Council. It's not something that we are going to solve here. The question becomes, how do we pay for that? You know, this is a step in the right direction, in my opinion. However, to be clear, I, I can't go for this, guys. You know, that's, that's my opinion right now, is that the four stories just doesn't work with the neighbors. And I love the product, I just don't know that this is the right place for it.
I agree, I think the product is really not...
Yes. So, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything?
Let's vote.
All right, got to make a motion.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to deny. The proposal as written.
Brent Meyer makes a motion to deny, and do we have a second?
Second.
Adam seconds it. All those in favor of the motion? Am I saying it correct?
And just to be clear, you know, you just make a recommendation, so it's a recommendation for denial to the City Council.
Yes, like Kevin said.
Okay, like Kevin said. All those in favor of recommending to deny?
Wait, yes.
It's unanimous. All righty, move on to the next, I guess, thank you for coming in.
We're not done.
We're not done, I know, yeah. We are... Oh, I did. I said it.
We didn't hear you.
Oh, you didn't hear me? Denied. I'm not adjourning, I got to get an update from Autumn.
Got to hear from Autumn.
Yes.
Is that adjourned?
No.
No.
We do plan on having a meeting at our regular meeting June 20th, okay?
June 20th.
June 20th.
All righty.
Is that the update?
That's it? Okay.
You should have been first.
Meeting is adjourned at 10:07 PM.